Good Tuesday afternoon, guys. My name is Jerry Miller and welcome to the 2021 Charlottesville City Council Candidate Debate. We are live across Charlottesville, central Virginia, the Commonwealth, the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. This debate, your opportunity to get to know the candidates running for council in an extremely important election for the history of Charlottesville and the future of Charlottesville. In a matter of moments, you will see Kathy Galvin, the moderator and emcee of this debate. We have extended invitations to everyone that is running for council. Four have committed to joining us today: Carl Brown, Brian Pinkston, Juan Diego Wade, and Yaz Washington. Without further ado, Judah Wickhauer, if you can go to the studio camera, I will slide to the timekeeper's chair and I will pass the microphone and the baton to Kathy Galvin.
Well, thank you so much, Jerry, and thank you for this opportunity to bring to the public the four candidates and their opinions about what the future of Charlottesville should be. So, the way this program is going to operate today is that each candidate will come and sit at the table with us, have two minutes for an introductory remark. Then, there will be six questions asked round robin of each candidate. They will have three minutes to answer each of those questions. After all questions have been asked and all candidates have had a chance to ask those questions, answer those questions, we're then going to allow another opportunity for them to reflect, add comments, and then, if time allows, a closing remark period at the very end of the program at two minutes. I will remind everybody of those time limits as we go along. This is not about a game of gotcha. This is a game of wanting to know who you are, what you stand for, and so the public can make a good, informed decision. With that, our first candidate coming up for introductory remarks is Carl Brown. And Carl, you're going to have two minutes to let us know who you are and why you're running and why you're qualified.
First of all, good evening, everybody. I guess we're evening time. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Carl E. Brown, AKA Killer, AKA Tar to me and this community. I know that's kind of odd because that's three names for one individual, but that just speaks to my evolution in this community from the beginnings, from adolescence to adulthood. Again, I was born and raised in Charlottesville, Virginia. Charlottesville pretty much raised me in a lot of aspects. My grandfather, who shoulders I stand on, was a mainstay and was a formidable individual in this community as I watched him kind of develop and build this community at a time when they were dealing with affordable housing issues then, in the late 60s. I watched my grandfather plan and prepare brick by brick and build housing for individuals who needed housing in the community. And most, many, if not most, of those structures are still standing and are still being used as housing for those individuals who needed it. I do not take this position lightly as I stand on the shoulders of many individuals besides my grandfather. I watched Drury Brown create a youth employment program through MACA and was one of the first participants to participate in it. I had the opportunity of watching R.A. Johnson delegate and be a formidable leader in this community when the community needed a voice to combat some of the things we were dealing with. I watched and worked with W.T. Lewis, who was administrator in this community, and kind of primed me for a position of such by just giving me different angles and perspectives. And I worked very closely with Holly Edwards, who I was very close with, in working with her request to make this city better. Just some of my work, my work extends beyond Charlottesville area, but just if we want to correlate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. We have to run a tight ship today. So, next up is Brian Pinkston. Again, two minutes, who you are, your qualifications, why you're running.
Right. First of all, thank you for having me here today. I really appreciate it. I'm supposed to look at this camera. I'm very grateful for that. My name's Brian Pinkston. My wife and three children and I have been in the central Virginia area for 17 years. Like a lot of people, a common story, we came to UVA for graduate school, loved the place. Our children started growing up, going to school, and here we are 17 years later and still appreciating the area. Kids have gone to PVCC and CHS. I feel like we're plugged in that way. Professionally, my background, I've been doing project management work for over 30 years. And I always like to tell people that project managers put people, resources, and ideas together to get things done. And if I'm elected, if I'm fortunate enough to earn people's votes, my goal would be to do just that, to put people, resources, and ideas together to get things done. People in this city have a huge heart. They want to see progress, and I want to do what I can to advance that. I feel like of all the things that the city is facing right now, struggles on city council to work as a unified team have probably been the highest and most impactful of issues that we faced. So, that would be something, the first thing that I would really make part of everything I did, that I would be compassionate, thoughtful, and effective. There's lots of things facing the city right now. The few that I would like to just mention and they'll come up throughout this are obviously executing against the Affordable Housing Plan that was recently endorsed by the council. I want to build strong partnerships with the county and the university. I want to support the Consolidated Middle School Program that's being planned. I want to also strengthen the downtown business community and make sure that those folks are supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pinkston. So, the next person is Juan Diego Wade. Again, two minutes to let everyone know who you are, your qualifications, why you're running, issues.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Diego Wade, and I am running for Charlottesville City Council. My wife Claudette and I have lived in the Locust Grove neighborhood for over 20 years. Our daughter Gabriella was born and raised here in Charlottesville. I believe that I should be the next city councilor for Charlottesville because my love and my devotion for this city has been shown through my service on the Charlottesville School Board for over 16 years and my involvement and leadership with numerous nonprofit organizations in the greater Charlottesville community. These experiences combined with my master's in urban environmental planning positions me well to serve this great city. Over the past several months, I have listened to a wide cross-section of citizens in this great city, and I believe I understand what they're looking for, what their concerns are in this criminal justice reform, affordable housing, public education, economic redevelopment, and climate justice. And if elected, I am committed to addressing these, but it must be done on equitable basis. Some of the things that I've done and I'm committed to in the time that I've been here is assisting small businesses get off the ground, particular businesses and entrepreneurs of color. I have led the way to provide swimming lessons to all 5th graders in the city. And I've mentored countless number of individuals, students, throughout school and beyond. My friends, my vision for Charlottesville is that it is a place where everyone, everyone feels welcome, safe, and comfortable. And if elected, I will work tirelessly to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wade. Again, the last person for this round robin is Yaz Washington. You will have two minutes. Again, let us know who you are, your qualifications, why you're running, issues, and future of Charlottesville.
Awesome. Okay, good afternoon. My name's Yaz Washington. I'm running to be the next of two councillors for Charlottesville, Virginia. I have a plan for greater Charlottesville, and it's a plan that works for all residents regardless of socioeconomic status. I plan to be able to address equitable education, environmental sustainability, criminal justice reform, and a really big one that's the central focus right now is urban planning and development. I definitely believe that all of these issues are very important as we continue to develop the city. But just to backtrack, I have worked on political campaigns, one for Cameron Webb, who ran for Congress for the 5th District to represent us alongside other communities and cities as well. And then, I also worked for Jim Hindley, who ran for Commonwealth District Attorney in Alamo County. Both of those definitely got me more involved in politics, and I've definitely decided to take a turn from being a politico to becoming a politician and elect and being able to introduce policies, being able to provide an action plan that works for all while making sure that we're continuing to provide equity, especially during this hard time, so that we can regain economic recovery. And also making sure that we're taking care of low-income individuals and families is really important as well, and making sure that everyone is becoming more self-sufficient. I definitely think that that's important to me. Growing up with my mom, Claudette Green, who works in consumer housing, definitely, you know, being able to walk alongside her and hearing about housing definitely got me more engaged in making sure that housing is accessible but affordable as well to individuals who are disadvantaged.
Thank you very much, Ms. Washington. Well, very good. Everyone kept to the time. Now, we're going to move on to the next phase of the program. And before I continue, I'd like to make sure, if you'd like me to address you as your salutation and your last name or as a first-name basis preferred? So, first name?
Carl.
Okay, everyone's saying yes. Good. We're getting more comfortable in this. Exactly what we want. All right. Okay, so, I will now begin the question and answer period. These questions came from members of the community. I sent out email blasts. I got about 50 questions from a dozen people, and then I added some of my own based on my experience as a Charlottesville City Councilor and a school board member. And so, we've got six questions that are pretty packed. So, I'm going to read the question once. All the candidates have a copy of these questions in front of them, and they were given these questions ahead of time because I wanted them to do their homework. Now, the first question has to deal with social and environmental justice. What should be Charlottesville's goals for affordable housing and an affordable environmentally sustainable transportation system that provides safe, convenient access to jobs, childcare, schools, parks, and healthy food? Should our streets be engineered just for cars or made to work also for walkers, cyclists, and bus riders? Are climate action and affordable housing and transportation goals mutually exclusive or interdependent? Why or why not? So, first person up is Carl. Three minutes.
And we'll break this down a little bit. From the start, just looking at this, I've already kind of looked over this, and when we talk about goals, that's something that I really stress in my work. But when we get to the affordable housing goals, I think we are so kind of divided in terms of what direction we want to go with housing, in terms of just understanding what that means as a community, where we're talking about tenants and renters, where we would talk about ownership. We have to really define what that means. Just knowing historically, one of the things that I realized, and I reference my grandfather, I think we need to be more collaborative in our efforts in allowing individuals, capital investors who are interested in share our interest in preserving Charlottesville. And there are investors out there who are interested in preserving homes in Charlottesville where they can be utilized strictly for affordable housing. So, one of our goals needs to be to be more collaborative and build better relationships and connectivity with those individuals who can provide a portion of that and not put all of that on the city. We also need to look at the community as a whole, Alamo County, UVA, and what they can bring to the table as they are part of this community as well. UVA sits in our community, and they have a $3 billion budget on land that's in the middle of the city, yet that land is, we make no money off of that land or revenue off of that land because it's considered Alamo County property. We need to kind of relook at or kind of get with UVA and then figure out what kind of partnerships, agreements we can come to that can offset some of the costs that we're kind of dealing with from a city with them in there. In terms of convenient jobs, access, I think that is too is collaborative in terms of the resources we have in our community that we don't tap into. And being more collaborative, again, and building the relationships that are already here. I think our home associations, I think the realtor associations, I think all of those entities need to be bought into when we're trying to solve this issue. I don't think this is a straight Charlottesville situation in terms of the city. I think it's collaborative in terms of all the other entities we have. And I think in terms of our walkers and engineering of the cars and walkers and the cyclists, I think that all becomes part of one because when we have a collection of individuals who are detailed and oriented in those different aspects, that allows us to be less disconnected and connected in conversations where they can come up. Do I think the affordable housing, transportation, and those goals are mutually exclusive? I don't think anything in Charlottesville at this point in time can be mutually exclusive. I think we need to be looking more on everything being as one, where we can have those same conversations to avoid more conversations of the same conversations that we've already had. My grandfather, again, was dealing with affordable housing.
Thank you very much, Carl. The next person's going to be Brian Pinkston. I will not repeat the question every time. Midway, I will, but for sake of time, just have it in front of you, Brian. Three minutes.
Right. I think that what Carl just mentioned was really, really good, both the fact that we have, these are issues we face for a long time in the community, and that everything is interdependent. What I like about the question is that it gets at the fact that things are so interdependent. There are these connections, and so, when we think about a specific issue like transportation or housing, it's very easy to see these sort of as atomistic, as it were, as a single issue, when we need to think about how these things are all interconnected. One of the later questions concerns the comprehensive plan, and I won't go into that too much right now, but just an introduction, a comprehensive plan basically is a five-year plan that lays out what a city, and it's mandated by the state, what a city aspires to be in terms of job and wealth creation, housing, transportation, land use, all of these things. And my campaign is built around this idea of the common good. And really, if you look at a well-written comprehensive plan, that's giving you a sense of what the common good is. It's everything in there that is required to have a flourishing and thriving community. Again, the question, I like it because it forces us to zoom back on the city and also to zoom in, both macro and micro, and look at all of those. I think it's pretty clear, particularly after the last few years, the major issues facing our city in terms of housing and so forth. And I think that those are being, they've been captured in the comprehensive plan, the input that people have given. I think the challenges, though, are the things we really need to think about. First of all, people disagree about the particulars. It's one thing to say, yeah, I'm all for density. It's another, someone puts, you know, an apartment complex in my backyard. NIMBYism, which we all struggle with, we don't want something in our own backyard, we're happy with it across the street. Money and revenue, we'll talk about that more later, but it takes money to do these things. For myself and my candidacy, what I hope to bring to all this is the fact that as a project manager, I'm all about helping people figure out what they really want to do, what are their goals and what are sort of aspirational. And then, talking with stakeholders, talking with folks in the community, anyone that's relevant to the issue at hand, and trying to generate a consensus, making a decision and moving forward. And I think that our city council really needs someone with that perspective right now. Two last things I want to say about this are, we need to do the small things, the quote-unquote "little things" well. So, for instance, over at Stribling Avenue, there's a desire to do a large development over there, but the people in the area are rightly concerned because there's no sidewalks, and they've been asking for sidewalks for a long time. So, that's an example. And then, the second thing is, let's not let perfection be the enemy of good enough. So, we need to come up with thoughtful, well-thought-out answers that meet our needs. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Brian. And the next person up will be Juan. And again, the question deals with affordable housing, public transit. Are they mutually exclusive or mutually reinforcing? Do we need to make our streets suitable and safe for all users?
Yes, these are really some compound questions. So, I'm going to hit on a few of the items. Affordable housing and climate justice are the linchpins, are two of the linchpin of my platform. They're vitally important. And affordable housing has been in the forefront of the community and the city for many years, and if I'm elected, it will continue to do so. But what I will do is that I will bring also a sense of intimate understanding of it because I've been involved with it over the last years of volunteering with my church through Habitat for Humanity or AHEP. I understand, talking to the individuals as I'm helping them build a house or providing lunches, I understand what that process is like. And as we thought, as I thought about this question, I thought about a dear friend that I have, and she lives in the Tenth and Page neighborhood. She's an elderly African-American lady. That neighborhood reared her, and she loved this neighborhood. But as we, as I go and visit her and we talk and we see her community and her neighbor, her neighborhood change, she's scared. She's like, am I going to be able to stay here the rest of my life? It's changing so much with the increase in people coming, buying houses, sometimes turning it down and then building really large houses right next to maybe some houses that are a tenth of the size. What I would like to do if I'm elected to city council is if individuals like my friend, if they want to stay in the city and live here, they should be able to. So, we will be able to create policies and programs to help property owners like that who are in these neighborhoods, they're really adjacent to the University of Virginia, that's really at being threatened for gentrification. And so, that will be at the forefront of my Affordable Housing and Housing Plan. We have wonderful nonprofits in this community that will help us in this effort. I will employ them to help us with this effort. Places like AHEP and Habitat, they're out there doing the work now that allows some of our residents to stay in their homes if they would like to concerning environmental justice. I think that the city should do everything that it can within reason. And when I say within reason, I don't think that we can say over the next two years, we're going to get completely off of all of fossil fuel and things like that because I just don't think that's possible for a local government to do. But it's so much more that we can do. We can employ the city and our residents to do things like energy audits, recycling, maybe riding their bikes more. There's so much more that we can do as residents to help the environment. And again, we have many nonprofits in the community that's assisting us in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Juan. And just a reminder to everybody, we need to not touch the mics. I do that myself. So, just hands off the mics. And so, the next person up is going to be Yaz. And again, the question is about affordable housing, public transportation, and all kinds of modes of transportation besides just the car, about streets safe for all users, and are they mutually exclusive? Are housing goals, transportation goals, environmental justice goals mutually exclusive or mutually reinforcing?
Okay, awesome. So, I'd like to start with the fact that...
Three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, sorry.
So, I'd like to start with the fact that Charlottesville is 10.2 square miles with 50,000 occupants currently residing here in the city. And basically, with the increase in population, it's definitely made it more imperative for why we need to be developing more housing sites or locations. So, with the comprehensive plan, city council has just dedicated $10 million over a 10-year span to 4,000 homes or subdivisions. I definitely think that it's important to make sure that we're being mindful in regards to density and how we approach blueprints, definitely making sure that we're continuing to incorporate multi-housing, multi-housing homes or whatever the case may be in reference to R2 zoning. So, aside from that, two things that go hand-in-hand with development is definitely making sure that we're continuing to provide accessibility. While we continue to expand the urban ring, one thing that's definitely important is access to transportation or making sure that we're properly engineering the roads to be able to incorporate walkability, which is our way of maintaining public safety. Another way to go on ahead and address eco-management is definitely making sure that we're taking measures through the development to be able to incorporate restrictive land use, making sure that we're not tearing down trees, but rather than that, that we're protecting the foundation of these trees, which will help with our carbon dioxide overall output or emissions. So, I definitely think that all of that's important. To get back to the people, which is really important, is being able to provide equity, making sure that we're in compliance with the US Housing and Urban Department or Development and everything like that. HUD is definitely important, making sure that we're continuing to provide housing vouchers. And then, we also have other city resources as well, like the Individual Development Account, which is a really great resource, as well as homeownership loans as well is really important. And I definitely think that provides a sense of inclusiveness as we continue to develop and the crisis against real estate, which is prices are becoming inflated and to address gentrification and everything, making sure that we're continuing to provide equity to disadvantaged individuals is very important. So, then aside from that, with the development in Star Hill, it's going to provide 1,400 jobs. So, I definitely think that making sure that we're incorporating that in the budget for the overall operating year is definitely important as well.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. That was a tough question. We're going to move on to the second one, and it's about governance. What is the role of the city manager, the council, and mayor? How will you foster collaborative discussions in the face of disagreement and empower the city manager and his or her staff to do their jobs while holding them accountable? Do you think the city's 2017 efficiency study and strategic plan, for example, are still relevant? And how will you measure progress in attaining council's goals? First one up is going to be Brian this time. Three minutes.
Excellent. This is such a great question. It's so pertinent to everything we do in the city, obviously. So, most people know this is, Charlottesville has a city manager form of government. This is a very common form of government with cities of our size. The opposite is so-called strong mayor form of government, and that's not what we have. We have a city manager form of government. City council is supposed to approve revenue, they're supposed to approve a budget. A city council has authority, some limited authority from the state in terms of ordinances and so forth that they can pass. We are a Dillon Rule state, as everyone knows, so basically, we have the power that's sort of left over for us. The city manager is the professional. One of the most important things the city council does is recruit, hire, and retain a professional city manager to keep the city day-to-day operations working. So, it's important for city council and city councilors to sort of stay in their own lane with respect to the city manager, to let him or her do their job. The mayor, the role of the mayor in a city like Charlottesville is largely symbolic, but just because it's symbolic, that doesn't mean it's not important. The mayor is supposed to set the tone for the city. When people think about Charlottesville, they want to think about the words that the mayor is saying and the way that they perceive Charlottesville. The other thing about the mayor that's really important is because of open meeting laws, it's not the case that city councilors can kind of get around and, you know, in a restaurant between meetings and sort of kick around ideas. Everything has to be held in public if you have more than two people present. So, the mayor, it's very important for the mayor to be talking to city councilors between and trying to generate either consensus or at least a way to frame the issues so that you make progress in these public meetings. You mentioned the strategic plan and the efficiency studies. Yeah, both of those are still relevant. I did some research myself on the city council's website the other day. It doesn't seem exactly clear that the strategic plan is being followed or that the measures are there, so I'd like to see that happen more. Maybe I just missed something. In terms of the efficiency study, I think that that is still accurate and worthwhile. I don't know that we need a new consultant to flesh those things out again. I don't know that we need a new consultant to flesh those things out again. I think that Chip Boils could take what's there, and he probably already is, and try to, and try to work out which items remaining on that list still need to be addressed. The one thing to remember about plans, though, of course, is the, is the old statement that no plan survives first contact with the enemy. And that's really true. We saw that in August 2017 with all the, all of the events that happened then. And that's why I feel like we really need, it's important to have people who have the right expertise and the right heart in these positions, both on city council and with the city manager, and why I think that hiring an effective city manager next time is gonna be so important. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Next person up will be Juan, Juan Diego. Again, this is a question about governance. Who's doing what? What lane do they have? How would you foster collaboration?
Yes, thank you. And I just, I believe that I'm crystal clear on the roles of the city council and the city manager and staff. I've actually lived this the last 16 years as a member of the Charlottesville City School Board, is very similar to the relationship of the chair, the school board, and the superintendent. The goal of the school board and the city council is threefold. Hire a city manager, set policy, and adopt a budget. And I understand in a community like Charlottesville, so much more is involved because we're a community where we want to talk to our elected officials, and I think that that's great. But big picture, those are our three duties. And I know as a member of the school board, I know that my duties extend to when I'm in a grocery store and a parent will come up and talk to me about an issue. And I think that that's wonderful, that we live in a community like that, that we, that we, that residents feel comfortable enough to come up and talk to us. As far as how we handle conflict, I think it's imperative that we, as a council, as a school board, that we create an environment where feedback is accepted, it's wanted. And that I, and if we don't have that, I will hold myself accountable, as well as other elected officials on the board with me. If we don't have that environment, I think it's vitally important that we do that. Concerning the study, I think the study is definitely still relevant. I think it's important because it's given us a path forward. I looked at the efficiency study. We did one with the school board in 2014, and the city, of course, did theirs in 2017. I understand how to read it. I think that the one that the city has is still relevant. It points out things that we're doing well as a city. It pointed at things like the fire department and a great bond rating, but also talked about things that we can improve on, like the development review process and, and kind of having a working plan for the council and the city. Those are things that we can improve upon. I think that I will employ that how we measure this is that we work with the city manager to create SMART goals so that we can measure that. Because I believe if you don't measure, you value what you measure. And so those are things that I think that we can do if we come together as a council and a community, that what values the city has and where we can find efficiency, that we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Juan. Next person up will be Yaz. And the question is about governance. You'll have three minutes. What are the roles between council, mayor, and city manager? How will you foster a sense of cooperation, collegiality? And how about those efficiency studies and strategic plans? Are they still relevant?
Okay, awesome. So definitely, we had talked lightly about entrepreneurship. So to make sure that everybody's involved and engaged and that they fully understand how the government here in Charlottesville works, I'd like to compare it to a nonprofit. So you have the city manager. The city manager is similar to a president or a CEO. And then you have the mayor, who is similar to a co-CEO essentially, but so many words. And then you have the council members, who are similar to a board. So basically, they all work in compliance with one another to make sure that Charlottesville is properly doing budget oversight, project management, and properly allocating the budget as well. And to get back to the political side of everything, the city manager is the binary official in regards to legislation and the administration. Then you have the mayor, who basically acts as the person who calls into motion the city council meetings. And basically, they're the one, they're the one that introduces the overall policies taking place and everything like that. And then to pivot, you have the council members, who basically, it seems as though typically they all are focused on a specialty, whether that's eco-management, housing, being able to provide equity, or whatever the case may be. I think all of these components makes for a really great council and a really great government altogether that's very effective. So aside from that, I definitely think that the strategic plan, I believe that was drafted in 2017, is still relevant. You know, making sure that we're taking the proper measures as it is a roadmap for greater Charlottesville and our long-term goals altogether. Let's see. Aside from that, definitely making sure that we're focusing on being able to actually introduce those policies and making sure that we're properly allocating the budget to be able to support the vision for a safe Charlottesville, a sufficient Charlottesville, an inclusive one, and also to making sure that we're continuing to keep the architecture and making sure that we have a beautiful Charlottesville as well and one that we can take pride in. So with that being said, I think I'm done.
And no one, you can be ahead of schedule.
Oh, my goodness.
There's no problem. That's what, that's what coming prepared is all about. So the last person on this question is Carl, and it's all about governance.
All about governance. And so when we look at roles, I think before we even get into those roles, I think we need to look at the organizational values we're setting and what position, what people, what we're looking for in those individuals in those roles. And so Charlottesville organizational values are leadership, respect, trust, excellence, and creativity. And the individuals in those roles should exume all of those things. And so from the city council, which is the highest form of how we delegate and legislate in this community, our city council needs to reflect leadership, trust, respect, excellence, and creativity, and foster that down to the hiring of a city manager. And so our values as a whole need to reflect every aspect of our governance. There should be any variance, and we should need to be able to address that as we go and be looking at that when we are electing officials and not off of what we like and what we think is best, but what is right for the city because we've already set a value system where we expect these things. In terms of fostering discussions in the face of disagreement, I think I've always been taught that a person should always agree to disagree. And so we should not get to the point where these conversations are personal. I think tough conversations need to be had across the board, not just in the government but in the community as well. And so in terms of empowerment, that's what I do on every single level. My goal is to work day-to-day to empower individuals to be better at what they do and allow them to see those day-to-day successes and working hard and feeling supported in doing what you have to do. No day, every, no day is a good day every day, but we can always work to have a better day the next day. So in terms of, in terms of just that thinking, holding an individual accountable is more about learning and not looking at whether a person is good or bad. We always need to be aggressive in what we work and learn from the mistakes we're making in a positive way where the individuals we're working with all feel supported and secure that they can make a mistake and move forward. And we need to have that going across the board. I think too often do we have bosses and we don't have leaders who can develop our people in, in the city, the people who do the work on a day-to-day basis to help the city manager be able to accomplish his job and to help the council to be able to meet the goals that we're trying to meet as a city. In terms of the efficiency study, I think it is still relevant in certain terms. There are some parts of it that we still need to work on, but it also shows some areas that we, we've been improving in. And I think in a climate of time where we've dealt with COVID, it's very difficult to go back and try to create something that is so essential and important. So I think we need to get down to build off of that and see what directions we need to go in terms of what's working and what's not working.
Okay.
And so I've...
No, you got 15 seconds.
I got 15 seconds. In terms of how I measure progress and attain the goals, the progress will be made from the bottom floor. How do our people that are doing the work on the ground level, how are they feeling in terms of morale and getting things accomplished and the goals that we set? And so it's collaborative, again, it's collaborative, and it'll show in the work.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna move on to the third question. And that question is about design, planning, zoning, and development. So what are your views on the comprehensive plan update, affordable housing strategy, zoning ordinance reform, and the city's complete streets policy known as Streets That Work? Do you think that these new policy and regulatory tools are needed to ensure more healthy, livable, inclusive, and equitable neighborhoods? Why or why not? What is the role of the council and city manager in making sure that these policies and rules are executed in a timely way? So the first person we have is Juan.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with this process. I served as a transportation planner for nearly 20 years, and as I noted earlier, I have a bachelor's from Norfolk State University in urban planning and a master's in urban environmental planning from the University of Virginia. I've helped to rewrite numerous zoning ordinance and comprehensive plans, so I'm very familiar with this process, the importance of them, and the impact that it can have on developing the city and how we view it. And so I will bring that to the table on day one as if elected to city council. I believe that bike lanes and sidewalks and safe streets are just part of a city's transportation network, and they have to be implemented, but it has to be done in a manner that has public input and is done in an equitable manner. We have to do that to get all residents involved and not with the perception that we're building this particular infrastructure for certain parts of, segments of the city. We have to move forward together as a city. That is, has to be done in everything that we do. As far as how do we go into, to measure this, I think that if we get, I will employ that we get quarterly updates from the city manager. And if we're not on track with those SMART goals and where we think we should be doing, we as a council then say, okay, well, what's happening here? Is it something that we need to do to help this process move forward if we're not going on the track that we think that we should be going on? And I think that the planning process, I just heard from too many individuals from the cross-section of the, individuals that I've talked with and residents about the planning process, that it's, it's too long, it's too cumbersome, and it's too uncertain. And so I just heard it from too many people that that is something that we have to change. I was just recently thinking about a conversation that I had with someone who wanted to set up something that, because we're a very seasonal town with the students coming in and out, and they wanted to do something to capture that when the students are here, and the process was so long that they just essentially missed that whole window. And the business was gone, that tax revenue is gone. We can't keep allowing that to happen because of our development process. And so I would just familiarize myself with the process, work with council, work with the city manager to improve that process so that we can make it as efficient as possible. Another thing that I would do is that I think the city does too many studies. We study things too, too much. And if I am elected to council, I will, I will have to be convinced that another study needs to be done for a particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person up is gonna be Yaz. And the question has to deal with design, planning, zoning, and development.
Okay, so in regards to development, I'd like to, again, address the comprehensive plan. They've approved $10 million over the next 10 years for 4,000 homes or subdivisions. I definitely think that's important as our overall, our overall population continues to increase. I definitely see how it's important that we will continue to need to build housing, making sure that we have affordable housing by continuing to be able to provide equity through community resources here in Charlottesville. So making sure that as we do continue to analyze the budget, making sure that we're definitely incorporating that. And I guess that would be a part of, oh, to, my apologies. And so then aside from that, I wanted to get to the fact that, you know, city council is very important, it's a really big job. Definitely maintaining public safety and public health are very important, and that's how we can continue to keep eco-management, policing, and equity and all of that very important as well. Aside from that, a part of public safety aside from policing is definitely making sure that transportation is being not only analyzed and expanded, but making sure that we're continuing to provide designs that help to tailor to the development altogether. So with that being said, like the streets, the streets that work, that's definitely a fund that's important because it helps with walkability, making sure that we have sidewalks and whatnot, so that there's less incidences occurring with bicyclists as well as pedestrians as well. And that's definitely something that came up in the Frye Springs Neighborhood Association, and it seems to come up quite a bit because as we continue to develop the city, making sure that the roads are taken care of, is something that I feel like easily is forgotten about, but it's definitely something that's important altogether. So far as the affordable housing plan, redevelopment's taking place currently here at CRHA, the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority at South First Street. So I definitely think it's important as we continue to build the city up and create new housing locations and sites, I definitely think it's important to focus on the existing sites as well and making sure that they're built up so that they can continue to progress and that people in low-income housing or altogether just people in the lower quartile of income definitely feel as though they're taken care of and they feel as though they're being addressed and not that, you know, their neighborhood doesn't matter simply because they're low-income.
You have 15 seconds.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right. So again, we're moving on down. So now the next person's gonna be Carl again, talking about design, planning, zoning, and development.
I think initially, just looking at the comprehensive plan, one of the things I've, just in looking at all these plans and reviewing, one of the things Charlottesville or we as a community do a great job at writing great reports. We can write the most awesome plans, get rewarded for it, but oftentimes we don't see those things come to fruition. And so just looking at that report right there, there were some things in that report that need to be more concrete, as good as it was written, when it comes to the plan itself and being able to execute this plan. The recommendations of that plan stated exactly, it took us right back to where we started from. They need to see a more con, a more concrete vision of our housing plan. And so I definitely think we need to look at it from a different perspective and not just be great writers, but we need to be people of action and put those plans into motion. And so our strategies, I think they just need a new perspective. I think we need to, again, we need to have it coming from a lot of different perspectives. I think we use terminology and come up with a name, wordplay in terms of like the streets that work. I think when we get to those points, those are little buzzwords, and so streets that work means that then there are some streets that don't work. What are those streets? We need to start identifying what those things mean because if nothing else, if there, we have streets that are working and some that are not, what are those areas? We need to be definitive because it's gonna impact somebody. In terms of regulatory tools and policy that's needed for healthy living and exclusive and equitable neighborhoods, I think that we need to look at the neighborhoods and find out where they are. Again, we don't have a clear understanding of what is coming out of our neighborhoods just because we're not in tune with the, what are the associations, the home associations in the various communities, and we have like nine of them. And so I think we need to do a better job of incorporating those entities to get a little more insight into every neighborhood as opposed to the ones that we feel popular or those who are represented by individuals who take an interest in particular policies and things because they care about their neighborhood. We got, we need to encourage individuals to care about their neighborhoods and show them the importance of being a part of the strategies and these comprehensive plans so the city as a whole can get all the information they need to, to first come up with a good comprehensive plan that's all-inclusive and have all the information that you would need from all the players in the city, which includes the home associations, particularly when you're talking about neighborhoods and what's good and what's bad. And so when I look at this comprehensive plan, it needs to be reworked, but I mean, again, there are some things in there that read well, but the... But I mean, again, there are some things in there that, that read well, but, but the overall thing is it reads very well, but I don't, I just don't see a lot of implementation in terms of it transferring from what we read to what is actually being done.
Thank you. All right. So the last person on this question is, is Brian. And the question is all about design, planning, zoning and development.
Right. So I would just encourage everyone who's watching to go to seavilleplans together dot com. So currently, the way these things work together is that you've got the comprehensive plan. The last one was written in 2013. It was supposed to have been updated in 2018, but that was delayed due to a lot of feedback, especially from housing advocates. You take the comprehensive plan, which contains everything from land use, transportation, job creation, wealth, wealth building, all of those things, and you marry them up with specific ordinances, in particular zoning ordinances to help, for example, increase density in the city. So that's, that's the way it's supposed to work. Again, things were delayed for a couple of years, and the reason for that is we had an outpouring of advocacy, activism, a really positive energy around getting a handle on the fact that Charlottesville has an affordable housing crisis. It's just a fact. And there's just a, in particular, Michael Payne, I think, has been sort of the figurehead of a lot of that. And they've done a lot of good work. And I'll have to say, if you go look at what they've drafted and what they're working on, the city council has recently endorsed, not yet funded, the affordable housing plan, you should go look at it. It talks about things like racial equity. It talks about regional collaboration. It talks about having comprehensive solutions, everything from subsidies for folks in low-income housing to better zoning, increased density. So I think, I think we're moving in the right direction with this new comprehensive plan and affordable housing plan. The comprehensive plan, they're in the middle of drafting that now. The new chapters are going to start coming out in the summer, so I encourage people to look at that. One thing that I think is important to recognize is that the current council has voted on this or will vote on it, and the next council will be charged with enacting it. And to Mr. Brown's point earlier, you know, looking at some of the things that were put forward in 2013, it's not always clear that we've actually made the kind of headway that we need to make. And so if I'm elected, that's what I'm going to focus on. We've got a comprehensive plan. It reflects imperfectly or not, the, the will of the folks in the city. And so let's just get it done. One person mentioned too about development, you know, it's not about being pro-development or against development. Development is going to happen, and we need it to increase our tax base. The city is landlocked, and so we need to help developers help us. I was just on a call the other day with, had a number of developers, this was with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. And these developers, younger guys, really wanting to help the city to create more housing, affordable housing for all of us. And we're stymied with both city council and with NDS. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's, we've completed that round for that question. The next question we're going to move on to has to deal with the budget and the fiscal health of the city. So what can city government do to generate more revenue to support operations and capital investments, given lower sales, lodging and meals tax revenue due to the pandemic? Should redevelopment be encouraged so as to generate more real estate, real estate tax revenue? And what can be done to counter rising land values that can instigate gentrification? If cuts are needed, how would you prioritize these cuts and ensure that long-term capital projects that transcend council terms, like the multimodal West Main Street project, continue to get funded and built, but not shelved? Should the city restore businesses lost during the pandemic? How, why, or why not? So the first one up on this one is Yaz.
Okay, so definitely there's been a need to address COVID altogether, obviously. It's a pandemic taking place, and we've had to not only address people due to the financial hardship, but also illnesses as well. You know, and with all that being said, the need to be able to actually like help people and be able to provide equity, I feel like has been more pressing. And being able to generate accessibility in different ways. And, you know, also to making sure that we're working to not only do that, but be able to support one another on different aspects, aside from financially as well, but definitely from a local level to a federal level. I believe there's been an increase in property tax for sure, which is definitely a way to be able to generate revenue, you know? And then aside from that, there's also been the introduction of crisis funding altogether as well. I believe that there, there's been an increase in government spending, which is really important as well, you know, to show that even though there is a hardship, that people aren't just like, you know, kind of out on their own. But through these shortfalls, there's definitely one thing that I would like to be able to introduce once again that comes from my positions, which is criminal justice reform. And while we wish to be able to uphold public safety, definitely being able to implement the, the pre-trial policy is really important because it works to be able to reduce the expenditures per inmate per day. It's about $93. And being able to make sure that they also have the ability to be able to return home as they await trial. And also too, for low-level offenders with a really controversial thing that's been brought up is the decriminalization of sex work. And then also which one that people weren't so against is the decriminalization of marijuana. So these are two things that are low-level offenses that I'm sure that the criminal justice system will be, or like Commonwealth attorneys will be working towards using alternative or diversion programs. So all in all, that will decrease the overall spending per year for Almiron Charlottesville Regional Jail, which will also be able to generate money, which I think that that money should be reallocated to the education system, even though that sounds like a strange pivot. I think we should be working to build people up and make them more self-sufficient. And then if we're reducing expenditures through this way, then that will be a really great way to redistribute that money altogether and be able to regain, regain economic activity.
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you. So Carl, you're up next. And the question is about the budget and the fiscal health of the city. How would you, what would you do to ensure the health and how would you raise revenue?
First of all, the health, I think we need to be on the ground level. And starting with, like all things I said before, when we're trying to generate more revenue, I think Charlottesville takes on the isolated position where it's just Charlottesville. We need to, again, look at our partners already in our community and build better relations and have discussions with Almiron County, with the University of Virginia, and just other entities that are willing to come in and partner with us to help that and, and building that revenue. I don't think it's something that Charlottesville itself is going to be able to do on its own without raising taxes on people, which that is definitely not what we want to be doing if we have other opportunities to partner with other communities in doing so. I want to go back to what Yaz just mentioned. She is very correct in the fact of the decriminalization of marijuana and the impact it's going to have on a community as a whole in terms of how the criminal justice deal with that. One of the other things we need to understand is the two-way fold. Cannabis, hemp, and those things are going to be legalized. And I think we need to really be looking ahead because it's coming whether we want it or not, the legalization of it, we need to be looking ahead at what opportunities we can get as a community in that, that industry to put back into our community with, and provide employment opportunities for those individuals who've been so greatly stricken by that. And so one of the things is utilize cannabis to kind of uplift those individuals that had kind of scarred a long time ago and be kind of conscious that that is coming. And in terms of other areas that we can incentivize, what we can do is incentivize developers to kind of partnership with us and kind of do things that are going to cater to us. One being if we got low-income houses, let's use solar energy for homes that's going to make cheaper, make it cheaper for individuals who are living in those homes to have less utilities and things of that nature, but also be able to save money and build to possibly buy their home going forward. There are some things in the community like providing legal assistance to those individuals who may be evicted. So there are a lot of little things that we can do in the community as far as our fiscal health and our business health, but we just have to be open. In terms of shelving programs, I think it's hard just to share, I'm not somebody who just commits and says shelve it. I think we need to look at what we can do in an interim to continue to build it, build upon what we're, what our vision is, but also again, be more inclusive of the individuals. And when I say that, when I say inclusive, I mean businesses and people who have the know-how and, and resources to be able to be a part of what we're trying to do. And we're talking about the solar energy and that, that population. So we just need to be more inclusive. We have a lot of resources in Charlottesville, and we just need to be a little more, take them a little more serious and let them be a part of this team.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to have Brian as the next person on this question about budget and fiscal health of the city.
Yes, so people have already touched on this, but I think it's worth just recalling the sort of structural parameters that we're dealing with when it comes to money, or as people euphemistically call it revenue enhancements, the need for more money. We're landlocked. We can't really expand any further, so we've got to work with the land that we've got in terms of property taxes, which is where our biggest revenue comes from. So there's little room for greenfield construction. Instead, we've got to do smart infill development if we're going to do development. In terms of raising housing assessments, it's true that we have a low millage rate in terms of our property tax. On the other hand, housing assessments are going through the roof. So it's very hard for me at least to justify wanting to raise housing property taxes until I at least understand a little more about what the net income from that is and if it's really reasonable to put on homeowners. In terms of the restaurant tax, it's another form of revenue. I talk to restaurateurs downtown, and it's just not the magic silver bullet that people think that it is. Those, even though some of the fee is passed on to someone coming in from out of town, the, the costs for transaction fees and so forth are taken by the restaurateurs. And, you know, the lodging tax is another popular thing that is, you know, again, not a silver bullet. So for me, the first thing I want to focus on is on the expenditure side, right? There's the expenditure and the revenue enhancements. On the expenditure side, the very first thing that I would say is that we need to get out of our own way. So many times, and I think everyone can understand this, is that city council and, and the city itself, we're not viewed as credible partners that you can trust over the course of multiple councils. You can look at it with the Dewberry Hotel. You can look at it with, with the farmer's market that was going to be downtown. We have developers that spend millions of dollars and nothing comes out of it. We are viewed as a place that's risky to work with in terms of if something has to go before council. We're also viewed as a place where a better or worse, our permitting process takes a long time to get done. So if we want developers to help us, we need to help them at least make things as straightforward as possible. Other things that I feel like we need to do on the expenditure side, we need to end the opposition between the business district and activists. We need to see the downtown mall as a jewel that we're going to strengthen. We need to minimize our legal entanglements with statutes and so forth. Hopefully those are wrapping up. We need to minimize what I'll call the drama that often spills over from city council and affects recruitment and retention of, of good, solid personnel in the city. The efficiency study was already mentioned. I think there's a lot of good ideas in there. I would ask, and probably this is already taking place, Chip Boils going through that. I don't think we need another consultant, as Juan mentioned earlier. We just need to have someone take that and see, see how we're going on that in terms of being efficient. I think we need to be realistic about what the city can do. We can't do everything. I also think that we need to use nonprofits as force multipliers, as it were, for the work that we do. So there's, there's all kinds of things that we could talk about in terms of revenue enhancements that I didn't get to. But in terms of priorities, I guess I would just say simply that.
Thank you.
I'll catch that later.
Yeah, there's another round robin later on. Thank you very much. It's a rich question. So the last person on this question will be Juan.
Thank you. I think I will begin with your, the end part of your question is that should we help businesses impacted by COVID? And I said definitely yes, because I believe that's the answer to all the other questions that you had. I think that if we assist our, those businesses, then, then our revenue will increase. I think that as more people get vaccinated, as more people, then more people will start traveling. We want our businesses to be up and ready to go so that we can have additional, that can have additional tax revenue coming in. I think that that will reduce the burden for us to increase on homeowners and to have other type of tax increases. If we, we have the businesses and, and hotels and things in place, those type of taxes were proportionally hit, you know, the tourists are coming to town more. So I would say we definitely assist businesses, get them up and going and strong, strong so that they can be ready, set and go for the traveling public as, as they are ready to start, you know, getting back on the road, hopefully this summer and even now. And I know that things are definitely picking back up. Because I really believe that, that, that having good, happy businesses is not only a source of, of tax revenue, but it's also a source of employment and quality of life and pride. And I think that we want to, to enhance that and make that in the forefront of what we do in our community. Because I, I know that every dollar that we put in towards, in the business, we're going to get $5 back, $5 back. So that's a well-granted investment that we do with our businesses. And I think that as far as preventing gentrification, I think it's awesome that so many people want to come to Charlottesville to live. But again, as I said earlier, we want to make sure that those residents that have been here, that were reared here, that want to stay here, that we have policies and programs in place that they can do that if they want to. And again, we have wonderful nonprofits in the, in the community, as well as existing programs that we have in Charlottesville to help that. But we just want to make sure that they are there and, and ready to go. I feel like I'm well-suited for this. For the last 10 years, I've been a career council. So I've been working one-on-one with job seekers and employers to find out what their needs are. So I have that, those relationships ready, set to go. And again, I will be able to bring that to the table on day one. We need to get our businesses up and going, find out what they need, see if they, if we need to create a little downtown business association where they can be able to have the things that they need to enhance the services and things that they, that they provide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I would just like to say, we're doing very well. We're going to be getting all the questions covered, so you're, you're staying right on target. So I appreciate your diligence. And again, you've all done your homework. So good job. So we've got two more questions. And the next one is about public education. And Carl will be the first one on that one. So what is the relationship between council and the school board? How can the city continue to pay for the increasing operational costs and pending $50 million capital investment for reconfiguration associated with the city schools without neglecting other longstanding responsibilities for public safety, transportation improvements, parks, affordable housing, other? Are the recommendations from the 2014 Blue Ribbon Commission's report on sustainable school funding still relevant? And if so, which ones would you explore and why?
Okay, just start with this. Public education has been, that's something dear to my heart because I came from the Charlottesville school system. And so I know the importance of their efforts in terms of what it is they're trying to achieve. And so when you talk about the relation of the council and the school board, basically the council is responsible for approving the school board's budgets each year and in looking at the various aspects of what they're trying to achieve going forward as a division. I think it's very important as a community that we understand how valuable our particular school system is and not minimize it. One of the things I've always noticed having, working with the schools, in a lot of aspects, is how easily it is to cut funding from the schools. But yet we do not take the time to look at those individuals who work at the schools. If my mind serves me correctly, the teachers haven't even got a raise in God knows how long, even when the city were getting raises. The teacher- the city were getting raises. The teachers haven't gotten a raise. And so they're forced to work in this pandemic and navigate how they perform their best duties without even getting the consideration of getting more and more of them to stay here. So we need to be very conscious because we're losing a lot of teachers year to year. Turnover is very high. And so, yeah, we have this broad aspect of a budget, but we got to also look at who going to be teaching our teachers, because people are opting out of their contracts to go other places who offer more opportunities in terms of the professionalism of being a teacher in other places. And we're not losing them to DC or we're losing them to Alamo County and those various counties allowing us. So we need to look at that, how we're making other people better in terms of how we go about our. In terms of the capital investment, the $50 million capital investment project, I think in this time, I think we need to look at it just because of so much uncertainty due to coronavirus. I'm not saying shelve it. I think we didn't need to just revisit it and look at what we can do going forward to make progress and not shelve the whole program. CH, I mean, if we look at Charlottesville public schools, they have not, the schools that we see right now are the very same schools that I attended. So Venable, some Paint and Morder, but not much has changed. Walker, Buford, Little Cosmetic, CHS has got the bulk of it, but we need to look at those things because those schools have not been revamped since I was in school. So, I mean, I do understand the capital investment aspect of it, but we also got to understand, these are our children and we want them in the best situation they can be from safety, health, buildings, all of those things. They need to get the best. They don't have a choice in this. We asked them to go there and that's what we offer them. So in terms of the Blue Ribbon Commission report, basically I think, I like parts of it and I'll just pull from what, I think again, the collaboration with Alamo County is huge. I think we are neglecting opportunities that are there for us. And then just the compensation from UVA is going to be a prevalent part of what we're doing.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Brian, you're next on this one, on education.
So I think it's well-known by most folks that the school board is its own entity. It's got a superintendent that's appointed by the school board, and the school board is in charge of putting together that budget, managing policy, hiring and firing, or hopefully not firing, but hiring and holding accountable the superintendent. And the goal is for city council, elected officials to sort of stay at arms length from the school board so that we don't inject partisanship into that whole thing. And so the school board is supposed to, and they do, bring together a budget, budget proposal, not only for operating expenses every year, but also for large capital investments. And I think that the relationship that the school board and city council have has been largely a positive thing. We can ask Juan when he comes up. But one of the things that's interesting in reading the Blue Ribbon Commission report that was done several years ago is that, my understanding is that the formula for how funding is determined for students hasn't really changed in a long time. And I think it's time to revisit that. We are asking our schools to do a lot. We're going to talk about policing in a minute. Well, teachers are the same in a way. There's a lot that we're asking our schools to do in terms of things that are just a challenge. It's interesting in reading that Blue Ribbon, I keep wanting to say Blue Ridge, the Blue Ribbon Commission report, it's before the 2018 New York Times article came out, so it's a different sort of perspective on things. But so much of what was there resonates with, say, the Orange Dot Report that Rich Skyler puts out with PBCC. We see in our schools, like we see in our society around us, that we have a city that's very wealthy in terms of having UVA here, for instance, but also lots of poverty. And so our schools are having to deal with that, and that impacts housing. While we need good, affordable housing so that teachers can focus on teaching. I am in favor of the reconfiguration of the schools. The number that's been quoted is 50 million. My guess is that it will be significantly higher than that because material costs are continuing to go up and it's just a case that project costs tend to creep. Nevertheless, I think it's something we as a community need to commit to. We want to have world-class schools, just like we want to have progressive housing policies. So for my part, I think there's going to be a multipronged approach here. We need to see what, how much of that UVA is willing to contribute. I think we need to set up, if this hasn't already happened, we need to set up a foundation so that people can donate and contribute towards raising this capital. We may need to consider a special tax just for this. And then the last thing is, you know, to leverage any kind of state or federal funding that might be available, but I do think it's important to do.
Thank you. So the next person on this question is going to be the resident expert, Juan. And the question is about public education, relationship with the school board. How are we going to cover all those costs?
Yeah, man, the pressure's on. I didn't tell you, no. No, again, I've lived this for the last 16 years. I have been a member of the City of Charlottesville School Board. I've served this chair for many years. I had the honor of serving as the president of the Virginia School Board Association, where I represented the 133 districts in the Commonwealth and around the state and the country. So I know the governance of this. I understand this. And if I'm elected to city council, I will have those relationships, that knowledge. I will be able to, again, again, I keep saying this, be able to bring this day one to my role as a city councillor. I really enjoyed my tenure on the school board, but I know that it was time for new and fresh ideas for someone else. And we have some great candidates running for that. But that is a nonpartisan, partisan role. And our duty is to create a budget that we think that is best serve the students in Charlottesville city school system. And then we present that to city council. And I understand that as city councillors, you know, we understand there's a great relationship, but as a councillor, I'm not going to go into the school and say, well, can you take that out, take that out? Why are you spending so much money there? They have deliberated as a council, as a community, school community, that that is their budget. We will certainly work with them and we understand where that's coming from. But I understand my role as a school board member and hopefully as a city councillor. As far as the $50 million for those improvements, you know, we have, this is kind of now with my school board hat on, we understand that the city has priorities and that there are other things that need to be done, but we have been waiting patiently. And I understand this as a city councillor, we need to get this done. How the school system goes will be how the city goes. And so when we get our school system up and going and it's fabulous and that, but man, we would take it to the next level if we get these improvements done. I understand we need to prioritize them with the other things that the city is doing and we're coming out this COVID-19, but this needs to be on the front burner along with the other things. And we will need to discuss it as a community as to how to move forward. But whether it's 50 million or 70 million, it's not going to get cheaper. I know when we first started talking about this, it was 20 and 30 million. So we need to decide, we need to do this because this number is not going to go down. And I think Carl has mentioned this. It's been at least 45 years since we've built a new building in the city. Other localities have done it. I think that we need to do it as well. The 2014 study is still, we did it, we understand it, and it was very relevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the last person on education will be Yaz. Okay. Again, what is the relationship between council and the school board? How can the city continue to pay for the increasing costs of the schools as well as the $50 million capital program? And how will you balance that need with other priorities of the city? And finally, the 2014 Blue Ribbon Commission report, is anything in that still useful?
Great. So definitely while the, while city council works to make sure that they're enhancing the quality of living here in Charlottesville with proper budget allocations, once again, project management and making sure that policies and programs are properly being introduced that are going to help with the overall longevity of Charlottesville and making sure that we're taking progressive strides to, towards urbanization. I definitely think that one thing that does need to be addressed is definitely the school reconfiguration. While it is a large investment, being that it is at $50 million, I definitely think that it's important to analyze the proposal for that, whether that means to expand Walker Elementary School and, you know, not reconfigure Buford or, and, you know, wait another year to be able to do Buford, to break down the cost of the overall expense. I definitely think one, another thing that we could analyze is procuring a bond at a federal level, which is basically a loan that would help us be able to pay for that without disrupting any other projects or, you know, basically shifting any departments to be in an uncomfortable position due to lack of funding. So I definitely think that that's important while making sure that we're analyzing the overall debt of Charlottesville so we don't continue to procure bonds similar to the one that is helping to develop Charlottesville redevelopment housing authority. So aside from that, I definitely think that the Ribbon Commission report is very important. I definitely think that that's something that should still be analyzed and we should be able to uphold it. I definitely think that it reinforces a sense of trust in the local government when we're able to not only introduce things but provide an action plan and then be able to implement it so that people can see results. Aside from that, the relation with school board and city council is that school board is the supervisory board for the education system. And well, there's one in the City of Charlottesville and Alamo County as well. But I definitely think that's important because they're able to make sure that everyone's receiving proper education while making sure that they can analyze things like the reconfiguration of the schools or being able to make sure that there's supportive classrooms. And aside from that, making sure that educators are receiving the wages that they deserve with the increase in wages recently, as heard in the school board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're now coming down to the last question, and Brian Pinkston will be the first one on this one. And it's about law enforcement and public safety. What are your views on the civilian review board and calls for defunding the police? Should the police department adopt a more holistic, neighborhood-based model of care and coordinated service delivery like the fire department's community risk reduction program? How could police officers improve their relationships with the community, especially the black and brown communities, while safeguarding public safety and meeting the health and emergency needs of the people they serve?
Thank you. Yeah, I do support the police civilian review board. I think that it is a no-brainer, honestly. I think it makes total sense for the community to have such a board for a number of reasons. First of all, it gives people in the community, particular people of color, persons of color, the feeling and the reality that there is a court of appeal, as it were, where they can go present their case if they feel like they've been unfairly targeted in an incident. I also feel like, though, for the police, both individual police officers and the police force as a whole, if they get on board with this and become really good partners, it's going to give them a chance to explain their side of things, as it were, to the larger public. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think it's unfortunate that some of the early days of this board were, as I say, had too much drama attached to them in terms of personalities and so forth. But it does feel like, when I was talking to Bellamy Brown yesterday, current chair, that things are settling down and that they're getting into the work. They're hoping to have the legislation they need from the city this summer to be able to, to be able to do investigations and so forth. In terms of defunding the police, it's very interesting. I received a text message a couple of weeks ago asking me about this question. I didn't know who it was coming from. You never can tell if it's someone who's for the police or against the police. This person turned out to be against the police. And I, you know, I just said, no, I'm not for defunding the police as I currently hear what that is. This motto or slogan came out of the protests last summer. We saw all kinds of evidence of police brutality across the country, which was deeply saddening after the killing and murder of Mr. George Floyd last May or June. And so I, the sentiment and the idea and the heart behind it, I support. Some people, when you go look, they're like, well, we don't really mean abolishing the police. We mean something different. Well, I mean something different, too. I'm for reimagining the police, re-envisioning the police. I think absolutely we need, as much as possible, move funds that are targeted for policing to things like the Community Services Board and Region 10, things like that. We're asking, like we do with our teachers, we're asking our police officers to do a lot, things that really should belong with the CSB or that should belong with nonprofits or with families. And so I do support the sorts of programs and things that you mentioned, Kathy, that, you know, that the fire department does and so forth. But it's a complicated question, no doubt. But I do believe that with thoughtful, generous, and gracious sort of engagement with the public, we can move this issue forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next person up will be Juan on this question about law enforcement and public safety.
Thank you. Last question?
Yeah, I know, it's gone by fast.
So I support the CRB. I believe in accountability, but not micromanagement. And as far as defunding the police, I think that, again, as Brian has mentioned, that term has come up. I have talked to a wide range and cross-section of citizens of Charlottesville, and they don't want to defund the police. They want police officers called when they dial 9114 in certain emergencies. But again, as Brian has mentioned, officers are called to do too much. Many circumstances they are called, they are not needed, armed response, response is not needed. And recently, a dear friend sent me some information on a program that they have in Eugene, Oregon, called the Kahoots. And you can look this up and there's a long acronym for that. But it's basically, for the last 31 years, they have been sending a group of trained professionals, mental health counselors, for those type of emergencies in case of addiction or homelessness or other issues, that that not only saves money, but it saves conflict and it could potentially save lives. We need to look at programs like that for the City of Charlottesville. That is the type of thing that we need because, again, our police officers are put into a difficult situations sometime. And as far as bridging the gap between the police department and the communities of color, I think it's vital because we need one another. I have been volunteering with the Charlottesville Police Foundation for the last few years to help bridge that gap. We have done some, but we have a lot more to do. And I can tell you it's a lot of work to be done because I have been pulled over for driving while black here in Charlottesville and all up along Interstate 81 when I was going and courting my wife when she was living in Hartford, Connecticut. And it's not unusual for me to be in organizations with my other organization where I have other brothers of color that we talk about, that they have been pulled over in other parts of the country. So this is, this is not unusual, but we need to change it because that can have a very damaging and long-lasting impact. I have decided that I want to turn that into working with the police department and not turn it into a negative impact as far as my relationship with the police because I really think that we need each other. They have an exceedingly difficult job to do. Again, we need one another. I think that it's one of the things that we can work together as a community to bridge that gap. And we talk about holistic approach. I think programs like the Kahoots Department Program is a program that we could do to bridge that gap. Thank you.
Thank you. So same question. Next person's going to be Yaz on this one. It's law enforcement and public safety. What are your views about the civilian review board, calls for defunding the police? Should there be a more holistic, neighborhood-based model of care like the fire department? And how can police officers improve relationships with the communities they serve, especially black and brown communities?
Great. So, yeah, definitely making sure that Charlottesville is upholding public safety is very important. I definitely think that the civilian review board does a very great job at being able to provide civilian oversight and work in compliance with the government. to provide civilian oversight and work in compliance with the police department to make sure that they're ethically doing their job. And I also think that by having this board in place, it is reducing injustices from taking place and knowing that they're being held accountable, but that it's more so a thing of we're here to make sure that you all are doing your job right, not in like a micromanagement type of way, but more so a thing that's really there for the residents and to make the residents feel more comfortable and with the relationship with the police department altogether. I definitely think that it's important not only to have this board be in place, but also to make sure that they're analyzing data alongside with the police department and make sure that they're able to make recommendations of where they think they could increase their proficiency as a law enforcement agency. Also as well, I definitely think that it's important that, well, it's kind of like giving the people what they want, but in a well-structured way, divesting the police department by $300,000, which recently happened, you know, so which was to counteract the slogan, which is to defund the police and making sure that those funds are being reallocated to non-policing forms that still continue to uphold public safety or distributing those funds to, you know, social services or education, housing, healthcare, whatever the case may be. Another one probably would be, which is already in place, things similar to like Buck Squad. Aside from that, definitely the risk reduction program, it's a, or, yeah, I guess it would be a program or branch to the fire department is very important. It's three branches within the fire department, that's one of them, and it's more, more so of a preventative measure to make sure that they can prevent incidences from occurring and making sure that they're analyzing census data to be able to apply resources that are going to help with, you know, safety here in Charlottesville, but more so things like incidences with bicyclists, you know, being able to reduce those by making sure that everyone kind of is aware of where we could use altered road design. Also, aside from that, definitely, oh, sorry about that.
No, 15 seconds.
But aside from that, I do want to pivot to wrap it up, but Marcus, Marcus Peters, there was a occurrence that took place in Richmond and out of that came the Marcus Alert, which is legislation passed by Governor, Governor Northam, which will be applied in July, and I definitely think that that's a preventative measure that the police department can take.
Thank you. I think now that your colleagues can look that up, the Marcus Alert. So Carl, you're the last person on this last question. Law enforcement and public safety.
You know, it's interesting because as I looked down this whole list, this is probably my expertise right here. And so in terms of the civilian review board, I think it's a work in progress. I think anytime it's new, anything that's new, we need to give it time, time to work. And that goes for our city, that goes for the CRB as well. And in terms of defunding the police, I think it was clickish. I think there are some areas that we need to be concentrating on in terms of the transparency of the budget. I think a lot of that is because we don't know what the budget is and what the money has been spent on. And so when you don't know, the first thing that says, okay, then we'll get rid of the whole thing. That's not a good approach to take, but I do understand it coming from the lack of transparency in the, in the budget and how do you go about it? Charlottesville has already been doing some things in the community holistically with the police department that go unnoticed, and I know that because I've worked with police officers and with Longo and community members as to what can we do differently in a police department. So de-escalation has always been something that the officers themselves want to work on, it's just not part of their training model and it needs to come from the top. So there needs to be something that comes across the board that the officers can feel confident, confident in and go in a holistic way. Too often do we indict the whole police department and I've been more on, we have individuals in Charlottesville, much like all of us, we are individuals, and so we need to be focusing more on the individual responsibilities that an individual officer performs when he's out in the community as opposed to all the police officers. When we do that, we put bad officers in bad positions. And so much like recently, the incident that took place with a longtime citizen, Mr. Gilmore, that was not an act of the police department, that was the act of an individual who happened to work on the police department. And so when we're talking about progress, to see the chief of police come out and acknowledge the wrong of this particular officer and hold that person accountability, that's a start because that's not something we never would see publicly or see out front. So the transparency is starting to show and I applaud Chief Brackney for her work and being able to do that, but as we look at those things, we need to look at the changes coming because that happened in our courts. That wasn't a proceeding where we had to go all the way through a TV situation and our, the Commonwealth attorney took initiative after looking at what had taken place and said, this is a crime regardless of who did the crime. And so we're making progress, we need to continue to make progress, but in terms of holistic changes in the police department, yeah, I think they're possible and I think they're open to it. We just need to be open to them.
Great. Okay, so we are now at 10 past 2:00 and we have another 20 minutes, so we're going to be able to have another little round robin to give each one of you an opportunity to reflect on the six questions that you've been asked in light now of the fact that you've heard all your other colleagues slash competitors talk about these issues as well. And so we're going to invite you back in again to sit at this hot seat and, and you have three minutes to just talk about what else you would like to say about any one of these six questions. And again, just for everyone's understanding, those questions dealt with, number one, was about the social and environmental justice and equity. Question number two was about governance. Question number three was about design, planning, zoning and development. Question number four was about the budget and the fiscal health of the city. Question five was about public education. And question six was about law enforcement and public safety. So if there was anything else you wanted to add on any one of those six areas, now's your chance. If you wanted to comment on what anybody else said, now's your chance. So given that Carl was the last one, the next person up is going to be Brian. This is three minutes.
Yeah, so first of all, I'm just grateful to be in a room with these folks. I think they're all capable, competent folks who have clearly have great hearts and love for the city and I'm just glad to be here with them. I think as I reflect, excuse me, as I reflect through these questions and as I listen to the things that have been said today, the thing that comes to mind for me is leadership, what it means, what it means to lead in all of these contexts. I mentioned earlier, having people in the right spot is very interesting. For instance, after the August 2017 incident, I remember speaking with people, business leaders on the downtown mall, as well as activists, who even though they were on polar opposites on so many issues, all agreed that they were failures of operational leadership with the city manager at the time. And so that's a common theme, I think, having people with the right expertise and then on the other hand, having people with the right heart who care about, care about doing the right thing for the city and when they engage with members in the city government itself, that they're doing it from a place of generosity and graciousness. And I think both of those have been things that we've challenged, we've had a hard time combining into a single person, people that have both technical competence, technical expertise and also just have a kind of generosity of heart and really want to pull out the best in people. So when I, when I look through this list, I don't see anything here that's undoable, non-doable, and I don't see anything here that's impossible. I see challenges, I see, like my dad used to say when it's time to mow the grass, opportunities, and I see these in abundance. I think that, you know, Charlottesville, due to its history, due to the fact that we have a large university here, is always going to be a unique and sort of special place and difficult to govern in some ways because there's so many different groups of constituents that we have to sort of keep satisfied, but I don't think it's impossible. And as I think about what we need most from city council on this next round, we need folks that have a leadership and managerial expertise, we need folks that know how to delve into budgets, people that know how to understand how plans are put together, like the comprehensive plan, and how to execute those plans. And we also need people that have just a heart for the city and are willing to put personal ego aside, put personal pride aside. It's one thing to advocate for your constituents, it's another for your own particular topic to be all that, you know, consumes you on council. So that's what I would hope to bring. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next up will be Juan. Your reflections on the six questions.
Those questions were, those six compound questions were, were very encompassing. So I think that what I would like to say is that I think that, again, I will be able to go from, from day one. I understand that politics, in addition to dealing with people, is really about relationships and I have that. I'm a 30-year employee of the county of Albemarle. I'm a graduate of the University of Virginia, but I also was trusted enough to be named co-chair of the university community, community working group. And one of the first things that we, one of the recommendations that we had was for the, one of the big impacts that the university had on the community was housing. And, and we said that that is something that the university must address. And recently, the university, you know, indicated that over the next five to 10 years that they want to build 1,500 affordable housing, not for students, but for workers and residents. And I believe that, that my input had a lot to do with that. Again, these are things that I am, that I have done, that I'm willing to do, that I have these relationships with stakeholders in the community that I will be able to, to bring to bear on, on day one. I understand that, that we have a lot of work to do with, not only, we were still in the mode of rebuilding from 2017 and now we have to rebuild from COVID-19, but I think that we can do it. I've seen it numerous times on the school board where we seemed like we had an immeasurable task to do, but the community pulled together and we were able to accomplish it. And, and I, and I believe, I truly believe that we can do this as a community, but we really have to come together and say, you know what, I may not agree with you, but I'm going to respect your opinion. And we, if everyone has the same vision of loving the city of Charlottesville, understanding that it's for everyone, then I think that we can move forward no matter what task lays ahead of us, but we have to be able to come to the table and understand that we're going to respect everyone's opinion and that this city is for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person up will be Yaz. And again, this is to focus mainly on any more reflections on the six questions because they were, they were compound questions, as Juan said, and they're about social and environmental justice. The second one was governance, the third one was design, planning, zoning and development, the fourth one was budget fiscal health, the fifth one was public education and the sixth one was law enforcement and public safety.
Great. So I definitely have a vision for greater Charlottesville and it's to be able to build the city up, build the people up and be able to provide equity as well. I definitely think that that's important and that can be done by continuing to be able to fund programs that provide equity to disadvantaged individuals, you know, as we work to continue to bridge divides, definitely taking the initiative to do so by making sure that we're continuing to make sure that they don't fall, you know, by the wayside or that they're not forgotten about simply because there is no one advocating for them and making sure that we're continuing to work with our community advocates and our neighborhood associations to make sure that each and every resident of Charlottesville feels as though they're being heard or at least that there's resources or organizations that are able to provide them with the resources they need, definitely in terms of low-income individuals and families. I definitely think that so far as with what Patcham's been doing is really great, I definitely volunteered there for quite some time and I think that that's amazing that they recently purchased a hotel motel to be able to house homeless individuals and making sure that they're able to transition as well. I definitely think that the homeless community is forgotten about and, sorry, and with COVID, you know, and whether they've experienced evictions or whatever the case is, we want to make sure that we have a fully-employed Charlottesville and that people aren't being forgotten about during this time or that they're not falling on hardship to the point that it's increasing our homeless community here. So aside from that, while we're continuing to build the city up with developments and making sure that we can support these projects that are being introduced, definitely at the very most, making sure that we're continuing to take initiatives to care about all individuals of all socioeconomic statuses and making sure that we're also able to tend to the needs of each and every neighborhood here. I definitely think that that encourages an inclusive Charlottesville and one where everybody feels like that their overall quality of life is being increased due to the resources that are being provided. Aside from that, public safety, I definitely think that it's great. The last data reports that I read, it seemed as though the crime rate had dropped, which is really great. I know there's been some incidences that have occurred, but all in all, it seems as though that'll be a trend, upward trend.
Thank you.
No worries.
So then now, the last person to just do a reflection is Carl, and again, is the reflection on all six questions. Any more departing thoughts?
You know, looking at all six questions, and they're broken down and done so eloquently and people's views, I think I want to, and I'm going to shift gears, including all six questions. The one thing I think we loathe in sight of, as much as this is political, this is not political, this is humanity. In, in, in the time we live in, every question we talked about involve one common thing, people. Every one of those questions involve people, so as the community of Charlottesville, we need to stop getting off of subject matters and look at what we're really talking about and what we're really dealing with. We're talking about people, people's lives, people who need. We're in a coronavirus, people are dying, people are sick, people don't have jobs. So we need to put more of our emphasis in the people that we're trying to work for and looking at how we work with the budget as opposed to just coming up with subject matters. I just announced I was running in March and I have all of these questions and so that becomes the norm. Well, can you do this? Can you do that? I can do it all and I've already been doing it, just in terms of my background in Charlottesville, just in this room, and I feel so good about being in this room. If I just break it down like this, when Jerry got here as a young beat writer trying to get on, Jerry was somebody that was, had a chance to build a relationship, wasn't he understood what I did? When Yaz, when I was running my first program, and I'm so very proud of this, Yaz was one of my counselors in that program. When I was working in the community with our reentry program and was seeking jobs, Juan was someone that I utilized at Albemarle Job Center. And so when we're talking about already having those connections, already doing work, we need to really be in-depth and understand that we, as much as we would like to say, what I will do, this is what I've always done, this is what I will continue to do, I'm only doing it in a more upfront way, I've always been behind the scenes, and, and so we need to look at that, but let's focus on the fact that this is humanity and as much as we want to say political, politics, politics is about a person. What we're talking about is humanity and this is our community and so this is a very fragile time because we've already shown everything is political and we look at where our community is right now. Our community needs us right now in a bad way, so we don't have time to mess around and be looking at what we think is best. We need to do what's right for our community and bring a balance to our community that's going to represent this community in a way that says we're working towards balance in all kinds, in all ways, in terms of our board, in terms of our city and how we spend our money, but we're also going to stick to our, our key values, what we write as leadership, respect, trust, excellence and creativity. Now, if we're not going to start there, then we're just wasting our time and we're just shooting the boot. And that's how.
All righty, well, that, that's very good. Thank you, Carl, and I, and we are now at the end of our program. Many of you have kind of, were very smart. of our program. Many of you have kind of, were very smart and used the last few, three minutes to also be part of your closing remarks, which has made absolute sense. So we're going to now have a little kind of repartee between me and Jerry. So Jerry, with some thoughts?
First, I want to thank the candidates for coming. Your time is your most precious commodity, and I'm grateful for sharing that time with the community. Kathy Galvin deserves a tremendous round of applause and a lot of accolades here. She put the questions together. She put the plan of attack together. She kept us on script. She moderated the debate flawlessly. She definitely deserves kudos. And I hope the community got some insight into four people that are putting a lot on the line here and giving so much to Charlottesville in what is an extremely important election.
And I couldn't agree more. I want to, again, thank you, Jerry, and thank our four candidates that came today. I did say before we started how amazingly lighthearted I felt, because I was not a candidate. And I know how much pressure you're under. I know what you're going through. And at the same time, I am really grateful, because each, all four of you have demonstrated a clear understanding of who you are as human beings. You have a set of values, and you have mutual respect for each other. That was also very evident to me, just as the way you were even passing and transitioning, coming from one chair to the next, and referencing each other in your answers. I'm feeling quite optimistic about what I learned today. And I hope the public, I hope you've learned a lot about the four candidates that came and spent their two hours with us today. So I'm grateful for this opportunity, Jerry. And I took a lot of notes, so now I know how to follow up with everybody. And I will be more than happy to give the questions to the press, so that they have that as a reference as well.
Very well said. In closing, vote, please vote. Please learn what the candidates stand for. This is an important election. Please vote. That's the debate. We will archive it online at iloveSeville.com. Thank you to everyone who participated. Folks, enjoy your afternoon. Take care.